Thirty, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, August 3rd. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley, Ronain.
Present.
Lunsman.
Present.
Reif.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance, cussing with the flag of the United States of America and to do the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
I'd ask for a motion to approve last week's minutes for the meeting of July 27, 2020.
Still moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote to approve last week's minutes, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. When I walked in here a few minutes ago, there was no open forum request, so I'm assuming that no one's here to speak on a non-agenda item, otherwise we'll move right along to old business. First, we've got ordinance 200701 to rezone property described as Dakota Street Lift Station Edition, 831st Avenue Northeast from I-2 District to M-District. This will be the second reading, passed last week. Bill?
We have no changes.
Mr. Bill.
From last week.
Mr. Bill. Can I get a motion for the second reading?
Still moved.
Final adoption?
Second.
Motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Reif. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bill? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the resolution affirming the official flag for the City of Aberdeen, motion to take from the table for consideration. So first off, why don't we take a motion to untable this up and discuss it?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Carl, give me a roll call vote to untable, take this item from the table, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. So we've got a resolution printed in the packets that we were provided, and Councilmen and Women, Langer and Councilman Ronain, presented a slightly modified version. So the first thing I'd like to do is kick that over to Rob and have him explain the difference between what was presented in the packet and what he has presented to us via email.
Actually, I'm going to defer to Tiffany if she would prefer to do it, but I'm prepared to if she's not.
Yeah. I just wanted you guys to see this resolution. After talking with the community organizations, they thought a nice compromise would be to adopt the flag that they presented as a community flag, then they could use that flag and do with it as they would like, and then the city can also keep their current flag so they can move forward in whatever direction the city council or the city would like with a new flag if they want, if they want to keep their current flag, but then that way they can keep the current city flag as well as have the new flag for a community flag for the community organizations to use as such. So Mayor, I would actually like to move for adoption of the resolution that we substituted and was provided to the council earlier this afternoon.
Tiffany, for the sake of open meetings here, would you care to read us the entry of the paragraph that was amended from what was in the publicly published packet, please?
So I have, let me just pull this up really quick. The only thing I believe that was amended was saying that...
How about the whole section, the whole bulleted section?
Yeah. The now therefore, which section are you wanting me to?
The last one that had the amended language. I haven't got it in front of me.
Okay, so it says now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the city council endorses the use of the community flag by organizations within the City of Aberdeen while retaining the 1988 flag as the official city flag.
That's the one. Does anyone have any questions? I guess, so we have a motion to amend that language or to bring forward that as our resolution. Do we have a second on that?
No, it's second to that.
A second from Remley. Does anyone have any questions for anyone as it relates to this? It sounds like from other correspondence that I had seen that the chamber and other organizations had kind of spearheaded that idea to some extent. Seems like everyone is on board with that.
So this, the new flag is going to be used for just for whenever you guys want to use it or organizations want to use it. We're endorsing that or what exactly are we doing?
If it runs for office, we have to be on their commercials. That's an endorsement joke here for you.
And a good one.
Do you want to speak just a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you. So this is really just a compromise because I know when we first introduced maybe a new flag concept, it is a hard concept to understand, I think, because it is a new marketing tool a lot of communities are using. And so we just feel like, you know, our purpose is to kind of, to use it really for marketing purposes, you know, maybe Main Street banners, maybe a mural, things that will incorporate the name Aberdeen with as well. But this is a compromise, so if people love the existing flag, they can still use that. We'll use this for marketing purposes.
Sounds good. Does anyone have any questions for Gail or Tiffany?
Just to clarify, so the existing city flag, we are going to pass to make that our official city flag, and then we're going to make this our official community flag. Is that correct?
So actually... The city flag actually had already been in place, so we're not actually changing anything. We're just basically reacknowledging that that is the city flag and this is the community flag.
Okay.
Yeah, 1988, I think you approved that.
Josh was 10. No, he wasn't even 10.
That was mine.
I was 2.
Never mind.
It's a race now. And Rob, one more time, the language, it says, read the part about the endorsement. I guess Tiffany had read that.
She did.
Yeah, I can read that, sorry.
Please do.
Oh, go ahead.
So it says now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the city council endorses the use of the community flag by organizations within the City of Aberdeen while retaining the 1988 flag as the official city flag.
Understood. So we've got a motion, a second, any questions or statements before we take a vote? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
No.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. We'll move along to the consent counter, possible approval. We've got items A through F for routine city business. Can I get a motion to pass these five items, six items?
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Does anyone have anything to add or question on any of these items? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Move along to new business, and since I think that the first item might be a long one, are you going to step us through the entirety of these packets there?
Just kind of a brief summary.
Okay, I was going to maybe leapfrog item B ahead of that in the sake of our lone guest that we've got here that might want to add something for B, but if this will be, it was going to take all night and I was going to make that recommendation, otherwise we'll move right along to it. So item A is a public hearing on the 2021 Capital Improvement Program, possible approval of the Resolution 200802R. So with that, I'm going to kick the floor over to you, Mr. Gah. Tell us about the capital outline program.
Thank you. So tonight is just really a brief introduction. I'm going to talk about the capital improvement project now, and then briefly in my comments, talk a little bit more about the general operating budget. You have both of those in front of you, or at least you should, they were sitting in front of you. I don't want to talk a lot about it tonight since you are seeing it for the first time, but just to highlight some of the things in there that are important, on page four of the capital improvement plan, this is the five-year plan amended, but specifically starting on page four, you can see the proposed sales tax allocation for 2021 and how it compares to past years. And then behind that is a large sheet folds out, shows you specifically those projects and where all of the funding will come from, from any of the projects that are identified in your capital improvement budget. And then furthermore, you get into pages five through eight, give you a little bit of a summary again about each part of that and some of the projects. It's important to note really that of this, it's a little over a $9 million proposed budget, 2.35 of that is to pay off existing debt service. So really, that's planned out for us and already been committed to by you in previous decisions. Almost another million dollars for reserve type projects, that things, maybe allowances for the future equipment so that we don't have to bite that off all at once. So again, using a little bit of that sales tax each year to plan for those purchases. Another $4.7 million or so in infrastructure improvements, and then previous programs and things that you've committed to, and so a little bit in the Parks and Rec, another 1.4 million dollars. So what we will do moving forward is we've set aside work sessions for the next two weeks at 4:30, an hour ahead of the regular meeting, and we'll start that next week with this, going through this specifically. This was a weird budget year because we really thought our revenue sources were going to be strongly affected, and so when the staff was putting this together, they were doing so really conservatively. We want to take a little bit of a look at our revenues, both on the capital and the operating side. There's a few things specifically in some of the projects that Robin oversees that we had to cut back on a little bit that we think we might be okay with moving forward, but again, we want to get your thoughts on some of this, specifically in this capital improvement plan. There's not a lot, but some of the ongoing programs that I think our citizens really notice and how you feel about that. So that's how we'll start out the work session and go in through that. You do have a resolution in your packet that has to be approved. This had to be presented tonight. The budget has to be initially presented. We have time to talk about both of them, so I'm going to ask that you, you've not approved the resolution, you can table it, and then once we've been through the work session, we'll be ready to move forward with approval of both budgets.
For what period of time are you requesting this item be tabled?
At least until after the work sessions. The first meeting in September, we'll start moving forward the approval process, so it could be tabled to that meeting.
Move to table to September 6.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Lunsman to table this action as requested by City Manager Joe Gah until the meeting of September 6.
It would be the 7th.
Actually, it would be September 8.
8th, thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. And so just so I have this in my notes, the work session is on the 10th and the 17th of August?
Yes.
And your starting is at 4:30?
4:30.
Bless your heart. Thank you.
So Rob, will you amend your request to table to September, the meeting of September?
You misheard me, I said the 8th.
Fair enough. Got a motion and a second to table this action item until September 8. Carl, can you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronin.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request for a community event permit from the Aberdeen Area BMX for Hub City Nationals at the 1111 First Avenue Southeast from August 7th to the 9th, 2020. Possible approval for the community event permit for Aberdeen Hub Area BMX, and we have a speaker here tonight, Kyle. It said you might be speaking on our packet, so and here you are. What have you got for us?
Basically, just in case there are some questions that need to be answered, I know the last several weeks, a few concerns came up as far as access for the Boys and Girls Club, 3M being able to access their storage units, because that's where they're storing a lot of their stuff for the mask supplies and whatnot, so that's really the main reason I'm here, in case there was any questions that needed to be answered about having that portion of First Avenue closed.
Have you addressed their concerns?
Yes, many times, yeah. Yeah, it's, we've got a very well-laid plan on how things are going to work, and even if it came to where it's like the city ambulance had to get through, we're going to be allowing that to still happen as well. We're not just saying, nope, nope, go around, so we definitely have the plan in place.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Reif and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Got a question from Councilman Johnson.
Just wondering about residents who would like to attend any of the BMS races, what is involved in public admission?
Public, getting into the event is free, but parking is what you would have to pay to actually enter into what we're calling the parking zone. We do have plenty of parking outside of that zone, so it wouldn't cost anything to actually come and be part of the event, but yeah, there is a charge to actually get within the confines of the event itself.
Okay, thank you. One question I have, Robin, maybe you can answer this, or anybody here. Is Third Avenue open yet, or is that still? Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. And what will be the main hours of the event?
The main, the time that the road will be closed, which is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, I believe it was 8:00 AM. I'm not exactly sure, I don't have the papers in front of me, but then it reopens later that day around 5:00 or 6:00. And then Saturday, again, it's very early, and it'll be reopened around 4:00 that day. And then on Sunday is the rush day where we try to get out of there by 1:00. So definitely in the evening on all three days, the First Avenue will be reopened.
Yep, so continuous racing from about 8:00 till?
Correct, yeah. We're looking at well over 850 participants coming for this event. I mentioned earlier, the hotels are sold out, so they're coming.
Good for you, good for them.
Yeah, once again, want to commend you for your engagement in this activity. Seems like it's gone off really well. We'll patch on the back when it's all, when it's all finished.
And I will be back to give you the economic impact, so we all know what exactly this event did bring to town. I've mentioned it before, we are proud of the fact that we're actually using promotional money that you gave us for this exact reason, to promote Aberdeen, and that's exactly what this event is doing.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the event permit.
Thank you.
We did that.
You already have that.
Oh, before we even started. Well, that's easy then. Carl, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Hey, thanks for joining us tonight, Mr. Oswald. Good luck at your event. Next, we've got the request for a community event permit for the Fallout Creative Community and Rock and Sands Entertainment at 218 South Main Street for a concert on August 9th. Possible approval of the community event permit for those two entities.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Ronain. Does anyone have anything to contribute on this one? There's no one here to add anything, so why don't you give us a roll call vote? Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to purchase two 2020 Ford Explorers with the Police Department Patrol Vehicles off state bid from Lam Motor Company of Oneida, South Dakota. Possible approval to purchase the Explorers in the amount of $72,204 and authorize the payment to Lam Motor Company. Chief McNeil, what can you tell us about these Explorers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor, as you stated, we're asking, last year we budgeted and were approved to spend the amount of $72,000 for two police vehicles. We're going to, we anticipate purchasing a 2024 Explorer Interceptor for the total price of $72,204. Those will be coming from Lam Motor Company on Oneida, which has the state bid on those vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Johnson. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Clint Rux.
Just a question, you know, the last several years you've bought in Tahoe's?
That's correct.
And now you're going to Explorers, any?
Well, the Chevy GMC product was redesigned, so they didn't have an offering for this year.
Hmm, okay. So, and are you going to do any cool graphics like you did on your other ones?
You know, if you've noticed the generations of cars, they started out looking a certain way, and now we're kind of moving to that traditional black and white, so I think that's where we're going to keep it. Unless we get a specific community request for something that's unique, we anticipate just following around that same suit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carl, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment change order for North Dakota Street roadway improvements, possible approval of payment number four in the amount of $151,685.42, and the change order number one in the amount of $99,217.5 in the negative for reconstruction, Inc., for work on the project. Robin, tell us about that.
The, probably the most important part of this is when I came in for the change order for the last one, we were change ordering in a little thicker sidewalk. I had said there was going to be a corresponding deduct at some point in time, that's what the $99,000, a lot of it is comprised of, is that reduction of the five-inch sidewalks. So just wanted to make sure you understood, we are following through with the deductions, even though we had a significant increase on the last one. So we do recommend the approval of the payment of $151,000 to REITs for this project.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any questions?
Are you happy with the product?
Product is good. We still have a couple odds and ends with landscaping. We really shouldn't seed until around September 1, otherwise it's just a waste of money putting it in, and we do have to get in the mailboxes yet, but the overall ride is good, I believe, and the product is good. We'll be keeping an eye on that area that did take rain to make sure that we've got the durability that was needed in the project, so we're happy so far.
Much better than the old.
Much better than the old.
Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of the bill list for August 3, 2020.
Moved. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have anything to add to this list, or did they have any questions? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Epstein.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the, excuse me, payroll, approval for the pay period from July 19, 2020 through August 1, 2020, and for the city's share of Social Security, old age, and survivors' insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Ronain. Carl, roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city manager's report. Mr. Gah, what have you got for us?
Yes, thank you, we'll, we'll go back to the other side of the budget, uh, because you have two books for your, your reading leisure, the, we've talked about the capital now, we'll kind of prime you up a little bit for the operating budget. Um, again, this is how I spent my first two weeks on the job, was reviewing this operating budget, um, so the first time the, the staff and I got to visit, it's, it's oftentimes where the city manager has to tell them no, so I wouldn't necessarily recommend that to, is, is everybody's starting point. But, uh, really, they came in with, with the direction, I think most of us did, in any city, uh, in 2020, looking at our budgets, we're, just be really conservative in what you ask for. Um, we have no idea what's going to happen with the revenues this year and so far, they're looking pretty good, but, uh, I think we're all very cautious about, about projecting into next year very much. Uh, but, uh, what you see in front of you is just pretty much a, a conservative, minimal, i- if not flat budget, no new positions were proposed, um, the capital purchases as far as equipment are, are pretty minimal. Um, so when we go into the, the work session, some of the things to think about when you're reviewing this, um, is probably one of the first things to talk about. Um, you know, my budget message, I like to project a little bit and you'll see that, um, in your, your, uh, budget, that's really not just about this year, it's about the next few years as we get planning, but probably some of the big things coming up are going to be improvements, uh, in our water and wastewater capacity. So with that, we should probably start looking at some rates and so we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, we're proposing, moving very slowly towards that, uh, they're not going to be aggressive rates at all. Um, and then just reviewing the, the revenues and the expenditures, a lot of that's in the, the schedules in the back there, A through E. Um, and then, then just really having an open discussion about how do you feel about the capital purchases that have been, have been proposed? Um, and in particular, some of them were pulled back. So do we, do we feel confident after reviewing the, the revenues a little bit to put some